All right. Martin, we up? All right. Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, September 13th, 2022. It's now 9:00 a.m. We're here for a regular session at Hunt County Commissioners' Court. This time I'll call the meeting to order and I'll apologize for it being a little warm in here right now. We do have the air turned down. I think since we normally meet at 10, they didn't have the computer had to get reset and we forgot about it. So it's cooling down and thank Commissioner Martin for calling and telling to get us some cool in here. All right. At this time, I'll ask Commissioner Martin to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this Commissioners' Court. We thank you for the people that we serve. We ask for knowledge, we ask for patience and understand each other. May our path walk the path of righteousness. In Christ's name, we ask all these things. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We have Commissioner Hutchins, Strait, Martin, and Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall. I'll be presiding over the meeting. Commissioners, you have the minutes from August 23rd, 2022, regular session. Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Minutes from August 30th, 2022, special session. Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. This time, we'll have public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff. They may be placed on a future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. Do we have anyone here willing to speak this morning? Daniel, anything online? Being known, we'll move on to, I'm gonna skip the whole business and come back to it because that'll take a little while, Daniel, the flood plain.
Yeah, well, it's not gonna get for approved today. We need Wednesday with one security.
So we're gonna table it again?
Yeah.
Postpone it for two weeks? Okay. All right. So we'll postpone it anyway. All right. New business consent calendar. Commissioners, I entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action items, approval accounts payable.
Make a motion, we pay the bills.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Approval of line item transfers.
Make a motion to approve line item transfers.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Approval of budget amendments.
Make a motion to approve budget amendments.
Second. Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Approval of payroll personnel.
Make a motion to approve payroll personnel.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item one, project update for Lake Tewocanee planning and zoning ordinance. Daniel?
Judge? What we have is a quick presentation just to give you a status update on where we are in the project. My name is Daniel Harrison. I'm with Freeze Nichols. Also with me today is Reese Wilson. We are planners and we've been helping with the planning around the lake and also the county subdivision regulations.
Just second, Daniel. Guys, is it up online? The screen? Is it now?
No, sir. There it is.
Is it now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Finally hit the right button.
Thank you. Just in this quick presentation, we'll just do a quick reminder of where we are in the process. We have met last week with the Lake Tewocanee Planning Commission to go over this and to start talking and I'll tell you where we are in that process, tell you where we're going on next steps. And of course, there's any discussion or questions that you have. We're also happy to meet with you in person. If you had any individual things that you wanted to dive into deeper, we can come up here and meet with you at your office. Real quick on the schedule, if you remember, we updated the subdivision regulations and those were adopted back in December of 2020. Then the Lake Tewocanee Conference of Plan, that was adopted at the beginning of this year. And so we are getting close on the zoning regulations and hopefully we'll have those ready for you to consider adoption either basically at the end of this year is what we're shooting for. Just really, if we wanted to summarize, what is the top 10 list for what is happening with the update in the zoning regulations? We have modernized the format, so it's gonna be easier for staff to maintain and to update in the future. We've improved the graphics. There's less technical jargon. We're trying to make this very user-friendly so it will live on the website and people can download it and figure out what the zoning in the Lake Tewocanee area is all about. We've updated the sign regulations to make sure that they're compliant with the latest in state and national laws. Also, we coordinated the revised zoning districts with the updated conference of plan. We've modernized the use table, which we'll take a look at here in a second, improved the development standards that we have for the areas around the lake, looked into streamlining the process as well because that's very important when someone's wanting to develop in the lake area, and then just expanded the nonconformities and enforcement provisions in the document. We also have a very handy definitions section at the end that really defines all the terms, all the land uses that someone would run across.
Daniel, before you go, let's make it clear to the public, the county does not have zoning authority except within 5,000 feet of Lake Tewocanee. So this is all we're talking about today is within 5,000 feet of the take line at Lake Tewocanee. So just so everybody, I don't want to get much phone calls, everybody going, "Good, we're getting zoning." We don't have that authority. We sure need it, Representative Slaton. We sure would like to have some, but we don't have that now. Sorry to interrupt you, but I want to make sure that anybody listening, that they understand that.
And the judge is absolutely correct. We'll have a map here on the next slide or two so you could see the boundaries of that zoning and 5,000 feet from the shoreline of the lake. So roughly, you're looking about a mile around the shoreline for Lake Tewocanee. It's the only place where zoning applies. That's sort of our layout of the zoning ordinance. First section, just general provisions, just stuff that we have to have in there. Then we jump into the zoning districts. We'll see those here in just a second. Use regulations, development standards, procedures and administration, nonconformities, enforcement, and our legal definitions. That first chapter is just how we establish the zoning ordinance, our legal references for that. Moving on to chapter two, that's where we have our zoning districts. We have reduced the number of zoning districts from 15 zoning districts down to 12. We've also added purpose statements. We've added internal cross-referencing, dimensional standards table. This is all very useful information that should make developing around the lake easier for people. Here's just a quick table that you could see. The proposed districts are on your left and the previous districts are on the right. So once again, from 15 down to 12, really combining the single-family 10 district with the patio home and the two mobile home districts into one zoning district. Here is the map that we were talking about. There is the image of the Lake Tewocanee zoning map. That was the current discussion that we were having, or that's the current zoning map. The proposed zoning map just looks a little bit different. We are right now at the very beginning of processes with the Lake Tewocanee Planning Commission to decide, should there be any changes on the map? As the state law says that we can go out 5,000 feet from the shoreline, so that's that red line that people see on the far side, just going around the lake. There's a couple of areas that aren't zoned inside that area, so that's just a question for the Planning Commission. Do they want to recommend to you to zone those areas? There's also some areas around West Tewocanee when we updated the previous, the previous conference of, or the zoning map was a little bit older. So some of those boundaries with West Tewocanee really didn't match where West Tewocanee boundaries are. So with the improvement to GIS and mapping software, we can really see where those areas are. So there's a few areas around Lake Tewocanee, or West Tewocanee, I'm sorry, that are not zoned. So that's something that we'll want to take a look at with the Planning Commission.
There's one particular spot and it's the white one right up due north of it, of That one right there, in fact, from my understanding, they're talking about doing a development when this, how it is not zoned right now, correct?
Correct. That's what we're noticing, that it is currently not zoned on there. Because what the state law sets up is that the city's zoning would trump the county zoning. But when the city's not covering that area, as we've seen, as we've updated the map, we've seen that the city limits of West Tewocanee is not there, so there currently really is no zoning on there.
Thank you.
But just for clarity, this is just the comprehensive plan. It's not actual zoned this time?
Yeah, well, we're looking, this is the updated zoning. It hasn't been approved. This is just working at the Planning Commission right now. The current zoning map, as it has been operating, is in place, but as we move to a more accurate GIS-based zoning map, we can see those elements.
That particular one, under the old zoning map, is it not zoned on that map?
It looks to be under West Tewocanee city limits, so we don't have a, we can double-check that, but that's something we can do on there.
Thank you.
So at the Planning Commission right now, we're having that discussion about, you know, some of those vacant areas, what those should be, if the zoning needs to be applied to them. The general philosophy behind the zoning map is not to change really any of the zoning. It's more of just a one-to-one transfer as we update the names and combine those districts that nobody's zoning is changing. It's just fixing a few of those areas that we've noticed that. Planning Commission, do you have a thought and recommendation to the Commissioners' Court? And then ultimately, we'll present that to you for your consideration. One of the things, I just wanted to show you here, how the zoning districts are labeled. We have a nice purpose statement for everything to explain why this district here, very clear what the dimensional regulations are. We'll have very, some handy charts in there so people can figure out where the front yard is and where the side yard is, what the lot size, how you calculate all that. So once again, leaning on some graphics to really help explain what's in there. So we talk about other use regulations. Once again, that's our different elements that we have in there as far as our use table. Here on the land use matrix, we have our different categories of our zoning districts, all color-coded, and so different uses listed down on the left side, so you could sort of see in what district what things are allowed. There is an example of the automotive dealership definition. Once again, people can click on this, see what that link is, can see the definition. Then there, if there's any type of special regulations that go along with that, there's a nice reference. People can also click on that if they have the PDF open on their laptop or on their tablet. Then we move on to development standards, and this is where we talk about what people, a lot of people think about when they think about zoning, landscaping regulations. How do we address trash dumpster screening, those type of things? How do we screen if it's outside storage? So we have some boat storage and things like that. Is all that gonna be screened behind fence or a wall? So those type of elements really handled in the development standards. Other things that we address are outdoor lighting, signs, access to properties, so we don't have all these curb cuts right along the main road, so it's a little easier for people to travel rather than having a lot of congestion on the roadway, other performance standards as well. Then we have a section dealing with administrative procedures. So if someone's wanting to come get a permit to build a new business, they would come through and the development process, and we just have that nicely outlined in different graphics as far as, what do I need to know to go through the process? Nonconformities, one of the things that we know always happens with updates to regulations is there'll be something that doesn't conform. And so how do we address these? Because typically, you continue just to use your property as it is. It's only when you're gonna do something new or different that you would need to conform on that. Then we have some enforcement regulations, so we just really strengthened the enforcement procedures. And then with just general legal provisions in there, the one I wanted to really highlight was the definition. So we do have that definition sections at the back, define all the uses in that use chart so people can figure out what this use really means, what an automotive dealership really entails. We have definitions for that and then of course, other just general definitions in there. So our next steps, we have presented to the Planning Commission last week and presented to them some of those ideas. One other thing that I wanted to mention that we presented an idea to them as far as subdivision and platting, right now, they're making a recommendation to you. The zoning does call it out as being more of an approval on their side and then appeals to you guys. But one of the questions that we have at the Planning Commission level right now is, does the Planning Commission need to be involved in the planning process or only in the zoning process? So that's just something that we're talking about at the Planning Commission level and for them to have an idea and a recommendation for you, and then of course, we'll have that discussion with you as well. But so next steps, in October, at their monthly meeting, we're gonna go back out and as we presented some ideas, we're gonna hear their feedback. Then what we can do is of course, come back and give you an update. Once again, I also mentioned that we could go ahead and come up here and to, I did notice something. I thought someone tapped me on the shoulder for.
We got one brave soul in the building.
I appreciate it. So, it's all that rain we had. So what we'll do is, we will present to the Planning Commission and then we will either come back to you for another presentation or, like I said, we can come and meet with you individually to hear your thoughts and comments. Thank you for that. And then what we will do, we'll see where we are at the Planning Commission and then we have some options here. In November, if they're saying, yeah, we're great with it, we want to make our recommendation to the Commissioners' Court to adopt this update as is, we could send it to you and you could possibly consider it as early as November, but let's leave some extra little wiggle room in there. And so I'm probably gonna say, we'll probably be considering it more in December on there. So that's the schedule that we really have moving forward, but I'd be happy to answer any questions or if you have any items you'd like to talk about.
Daniel, I appreciate all the work that you have done in reference to this. I was talking to Brian earlier, last week, and I appreciate that new map you gave us. That's very good. We do, I do have some questions in reference to this, going with the rules and regulations that we have with our own, with our own platting rules and regulations, the closer that we can stay with that, and I understand that you worked this off of, you know, the other, what is to be later on in the future, and I appreciate that. But I think we need to, if I'm not mistaken, lines on roadways and stuff like that, you know, how much is required there versus our regular platting situation. Also, for instance, the one and a half acre on that one thing you had up there, if I'm not mistaken, it was 63,000, which that comes out to 1.4911 acreage. We normally on our others, one and a half acres and then go down from there as far as road. Am I correct on this, Brian? If we can stay with that, kind of look at that and try to stay with the overall, that way, theirs is not gonna be much different from what we have out here beyond that 5,000 square acre.
Yeah. And.
I think just wanting to make sure that the perches from the subdivision regulations align with the.
Yes.
And that's one of the things we did talk about at the Planning Commission last week, aligning that. And if we need to align, we did have the old SF 40, which we'll just call SF 1, so we'll get away from calling it exactly 40,000. If we need to have it as one acre, which is 43,560, and then one and a half acre, we can terminate as acres rather than square footages and just to make sure that aligns with the way we have it worded in other county regulations.
Thank you. And I would like to meet with Brian and you in reference to this, and you've said you're willing and I think it's good. Appreciate you.
We'll work with your calendar and get that set up.
Anybody else? Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
Action item number two, monthly treasury report for July 2022. Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item three, formal bid number 228-22 asphalt hot and cold mix, 12-month contract effective September 24th, 2022 through September 23, 2023, awarded to all qualified bidders per attached bid tabulation in local government code 262.027E. Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item four, formal bid number 229-22 road rock, 12-month contract effective October 8th, 2022 through October 7th, 2023, awarded to all qualified bidders per attached bid award tabulation in local government code 262.027E. Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Request to represent Lake's Regional Community Center prosecuting an application for replacement of an intellectually disabled into a residential care facility under chapter 593, Texas Health and Safety. Is Calvin here or coming? Oh, yeah. Yeah, I got you.
By the county attorney's office. If you'll remember, we did something similar to this back in July. We are asking for approval to represent Lake's Regional Community Center in placing a Hunt County resident, a 28-year-old Hunt County resident with mental retardation into a long-term state-supported living center.
Okay, any questions, Commissioners?
Yeah. Where is he? Is it Lake Regional Community Center?
It's here in Green.
Okay, is it across from, on the right down there?
Yes, yes, sir. And the reason we have to do it like this is the, under the Health and Safety Code, chapter 593, it doesn't allow the county attorney's office to represent them in this civil action. So we have to get approval from the court to do that.
You okay?
Yeah, this is saying it's the last one.
Right.
Y'all just didn't get approval, so they have to come in every time to ask.
Do we need to do it as a blanket approval in the future or?
Calvin and I talked a little bit about that the other day and he didn't want to at that time.
Okay.
I think that's still our position. We don't want to do a blanket.
Okay, that's fine.
And to be clear, Judge, this is just authorizing them to represent.
One person, yeah.
You.
Yes, one person, yeah.
Got you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number six, Declaration of Local State of Disaster. Carmen and Brian, when do y'all want to speak first?
Good morning. Thank you all for having me and I appreciate you taking this matter up. It's very serious and I wanted to just share a few things. If anyone's wondering why Hunt County would be declaring the border an invasion, well, as we set budgets and things like that, we look at neighboring counties and we say, well, what's going on in Rockwall or Collin? And we look and compare. And the state of Texas and the citizens of Texas needs to know what's going on in Mexico. You basically have a shell government. It is controlled entirely by the cartels. Let me tell you a few things that are going on that should be disturbing and alarming. In 2007, Mexico, this is just next door to us, had 3,376 killings in Mexico. In 2021, there was 43,964 killings with over 14,000 missing. Those are the people they chop up in barrels and burn and disappear. Then you look at, that just speaks to the outright crime that's going on. You look at the number of overdoses in America in the mid-'90s. It hovered around 10,000 through the mid-'90s. Last year, in America, there was over 107,000 overdoses. And in fact, just recently, Hunt County Sheriff's Department got over 3,000 fentanyl pills. We have drugs, crime, and that's not even to speak to the human trafficking. We are being invaded and it is all of our problem. I got one more thing. Because as these border counties, as they get blood of their resources and manpower, the crime comes up here, the people are coming here, all over the country, the cartels are spreading. They used to mainly just stay on their side in Mexico, but no, 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 they have a presence in every county in Texas. And whenever the counties run out of money along the border, who helps pay for that? You and me, the residents of Hunt County. Here's an example of one county, less than half the size of Hunt County, who had a one-day operation with law enforcement coming from different organizations to help them for one day in their county, under 50,000 population. So imagine this happening in Hunt County, but this is what's going on down there. In one day, they had 62 traffic stops, one pursuit, one stolen vehicle recovered, five felony arrests, five misdemeanor arrests, two warrants arrest, just under two grams of meth, 13 ounces marijuana, two weapons seized. That is with multiple law enforcement agencies on a county, less than half the population of Hunt County. And that's going on every day in every county in Texas. In fact, if you look at the number of people that is coming across, it is an invasion. Every two months, there's over 1.2 million people coming across the border. Do you know that's the size of one of our top 10 largest cities in America? People just coming across, of course, they worry about if people have their vaccines here and different things like that, but people are coming across, we don't know who they are, we don't know their background or anything. And then one last thing to tell you, you can go to Judicial Watch, a website, they have an article on there. There has been over 9,000 drone flights into America from the cartels surveilling our law enforcement to know where to go. If you do not think this is an invasion, we have a different definition of what an invasion is. The cartels are doing an all-out assault on us, our people. They have drone flights trying to know where the law enforcement is and they're putting through record numbers of fentanyl, killing people, have their human trafficking operations. It's absolutely catastrophic what's going on and it affects every one of us in Texas and affects Hunt County because law enforcement can tell you what goes up and down Interstate 30 every day and the potential for chases and whatnot. But I appreciate y'all bringing this forward. I appreciate y'all declaring this an invasion because it is exactly what it is. It is not the border you and I knew 20, 30 years ago, not at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Slaton. Carmen, you want to read the declaration?
All right. Thank you for letting me present this. It's the Declaration of Local State of Disaster. Whereas the health, safety, and welfare of Hunt County residents are under imminent threat of disaster from unprecedented levels of illegal immigration, human trafficking, and drug smuggling coming across the U.S. border from Mexico. Whereas, since January 2021, more than 3.2 million illegal aliens have been apprehended after unlawfully entering the United States. More than 800,000 illegal aliens have avoided apprehension while unlawfully entering the United States and remain unaccounted for within our nation. So far this year, CBP has identified more than 50 known terrorists who have unlawfully entered the United States through our unsecured border with Mexico. The unprecedented amount of human trafficking combined with the smuggling of fentanyl and other opioids infiltrating our border with Mexico has killed over 71,238 American citizens. The sophisticated human smuggling and drug trafficking organizations that facilitate these criminal acts are spearheaded by violent international drug cartels who have operational control over our unsecured U.S.-Mexico border. Whereas, the ongoing immigration crisis on the Texas border is not acceptable and has resulted in a security threat and humanitarian disaster with overwhelming consequences to residents of Hunt County and Texans alike. Whereas, the county judge of Hunt County, Texas, has determined that extraordinary measures must be taken to ensure the protection of health, safety, and welfare of our county residents. residents. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the county judge of Hunt County, Texas, that the aforementioned recitation of facts is hereby adopted as findings of fact related to this declaration, and, number two, that as a matter of law, the aforementioned facts constitute, among other things, an invasion of Hunt County, Texas, as the term invasion is used in Article Four, Section Four of the U.S. Constitution, and in Article Four, Section Seven of the Texas Constitution. And, number three, that pursuant to Section 433.005A of the Texas Government Code, calling of state military forces, and Article Four, Section Seven of the Texas Constitution, Governor as Commander in Chief of Military Forces, this declaration does hereby request that the Governor of Texas, as Commander in Chief of the Military Forces of the State, declare the existence of an invasion on its border with Mexico and take necessary actions to preserve and protect the sovereignty and territorial integrity of Texas. And, number four, that this declaration hereby requests the Governor of Texas to act under the constitutional authority granted unto him under Article Four, Section Seven of the Texas Constitution, and Article One, Section Seven, or Section 10, Clause Three of the U.S. Constitution, and immediately prevent and/or remove all persons invading the sovereignty of Texas and that of the United States. And, number five, that a local state of disaster is hereby declared for Hunt County, Texas, pursuant to Section 418.0, .108A of the Texas Government Code. And that, number six, pursuant to Section 418.108C of the Texas Government Code, this declaration of a local state of disaster shall be given prompt and general publicity and shall be filed promptly with the county clerk of Hunt County, Texas. And, number seven, that this declaration hereby authorizes the use of all lawfully available resources and authority granted under both the Constitution of Texas and the Constitution of the United States. And, number eight, that this declaration shall take effect immediately from and after its issuance, and upon approval by the Hunt County Commissioners Court, shall continue in effect until terminated by the county judge. Pursuant to this declaration, additional directives may be issued by the county judge at any time deemed necessary and/or relevant. Declare this the 13th day of September 2022.
Your Honor.
Thank you, Carmen.
May we have a discussion?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I want to thank you for bringing this up, but I want to point out some other stuff. I want to point out the statistics and all that. Under Article Four, Section Seven of Texas Constitution, do y'all know what that is? Does anybody know what it is? Basically, it's a call that the governor becomes the military chief. Am I correct? To the National Guard, everyone else, disaster, even the sheriff back there. Okay? Am I correct? And I, Sheriff, I appreciate judging addiction that you have done, there's no doubt about that. Now, we've got Article One, Section 10, Class Three of the U.S. Constitution, that is also talked about in reference to this. Does anybody know what that is? You know what it is? What is it? What it has to do is the prohibition of state charging duties of tonnage preventing state, basically the state making agreements with other states and outside of other nations and stuff like that. That's what's on this thing, okay? We have 43 counties that have decided to declare this local state of disaster. We had 34 originally, and that was back in June of, I believe it was June of '21. So, here we keep on coming. On those first 34, 250 millions of funds were sent to the border in relation to those counties. My question is, how much of this funding will be set right here if we go through there and the state says, hey, we deserve it? Is it going to back up our law enforcement in reference to that? Am I making sense?
Philip, it already does affect us.
Well, it already is affecting us, and you're correct. It's affecting us because we've had to, basically, under our mental health and all this bid, we've had over hundreds of thousands.
We've lost protection from our DPS because they're at order. We've, our jail has gotten backed up because the state can't handle it all, and they're not taking all our prisoners, so we're paying for it because the state can't do the things it's supposed to be doing because it's having to do what the U.S. government won't do.
Yes, sir. I agree. I agree. But yet, we're going to go into another deal, basically, that supposedly, looking at number six, pursuant for a period of not more than seven days.
No, that's been revised.
But then, I'm just reading what it says.
Now, that's been revised, that's the old one. You got, we revised it last night, yesterday afternoon.
Well, it says for seven days, what is, what is the new revision?
That's my authority, that would have been my authority, I could have signed this with, under my authority, for seven days, and the court would have to take action. So, we revised it because we were bringing it to court. I didn't want to sign it and bring it to court the next day.
Sorry, we already.
Okay, well, this was, the percent of number six was pursuant to Section 418.108B. It continued for seven days, and then number seven, it said it would come back, it would be deleted at that time, with the exception, basically, if the Commissioners Court went on and decided to continue with this. So, now we have those, we have number seven out also, number six and number seven's out, correct?
Reworded.
Okay, reworded.
Yes, sir.
Wait a second, I knew you could sure answer it.
Point number six and point number nine on the previous version, the one that you're looking at, contradicted each other.
Yes, that's correct.
And so, we removed point number six to clarify that it would be, it would be adopted indefinitely unless the judge acts on it. So, that, that point number six is.
Okay, on point number nine, okay. This is important for us to know to make any kind of decision.
Well, so, I'm not sure how you got that version, but we.
I got it through the agenda.
There's an updated version.
Okay, I'm reading what I was given, okay? And the thing about it is, is we can change these things from one moment to the other, but yes, I was bringing that up because it was contradicting each other. Now, although it's 34, there's actually 43 counties throughout the state that have done this one or similar to it, or similar to it, okay? So, what we've done last night sometime, we've changed it to where, what? Read the one that you read at the last, is that enough to date one?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
It's, it's here, yeah. So, what, Philip, are you arguing far against this? I can't figure it out.
I'm trying to figure out what the mess up was, is what I've gotten, what I was giving.
Well, because we revised it because we had a review, and if you, if you would look at your email, we would email you stuff, but if we had it last night, we wouldn't, couldn't have got it to you anyway.
I got, I understand that, but that should have been brought up.
We didn't get it to you until late, we didn't revise it until late yesterday.
I'm not against this, but tell me this right here, if we're going to, and this is a good question, reference Declaration of Local State of Disaster, if we receive money in reference to this, it's going to the border, am I correct?
We're not asking for money in.
No, we're, we're asking for a declaration that, that, in order for a declaration for it to have a disaster, money is in reference to that, am I correct? Am I correct?
Well, not entirely about money here. The, the idea and the spirit behind this, the, the border counties that initially did this, they were trying to get the state government to act. They're being invaded, and they couldn't, they were overwhelmed. They, I mean, you got, you got residents in the counties, and this is very sad, and it's very real, you had residents in the counties.
Yes.
They couldn't get ambulance service because the ambulance service was at the scene of the crash where the pursuit was with the human traffickers. And it's, it's, it's a bad situation, of course, all the things, all the crime and everything coming here. So, where this is coming from is, like I say, trying to get the governor to act because the federal government won't. Now, let me give a little history. Of course, border and custom, you know, U.S. Border and Customs, that didn't start till what year? Like 1927, ballpark right in there? Before that, it was a no-brainer, everyone expected Texas to take care of its own border, and it did. And it's only because in our modern thinking now, we think that the federal government has to be our nanny and do everything for us. But in fact, Texas is very capable and lawfully able to defend itself from threats. And so, I'll give you an example of what Sam Houston wrote. I won't read the whole paragraph, but this is to the Secretary of War, I believe, March 8th.
I read that.
He wrote, and on the same day, he wrote the Secretary of War requesting that the government furnish Texas 2,000 percussion rifles, 1,000 Sharps, 3,000 Colt revolvers, 1,000 Calvary accountments. In the same letter, he offered a, offered to raise for the service 5,000 Texas volunteers, and he declared, "Texas is ready for the emergency and will act at a moment's warning. Texas needs to repel the invasion, both from the Indians and Mexico, and immediately supply, and immediate supply of arms." We have to act, and what it is, is the counties who are being burdened by the crime and everything with their residents, they're trying to get the state to be more active, more aggressive. Operation Lone Star is a good thing, they're doing great things, but we don't believe they're doing enough because the crime, the flow of people is only increasing. We haven't decreased the numbers, and you want to know the most awful thing in this, if you go to the federal website, you can find missing and exploited children. But you know you can't find one picture of a kid that's come through the Texas border illegally. That is the most important question every one of us should be asking right now, is where are the children that are coming through the border? And we're letting that happen to children in Texas, and we've got to, to stand up, and that's what this is about. Now, once the governor declares this an invasion, yes, he has lots of things in his capacity. I have no idea how he will allocate funds around the state or whatever, but it's the idea of getting him to treat it as it is, and it's an invasion.
Okay, and you made a statement right there, so you do advise there are funds. Yes, that's what I'm saying, but those funds are needed up here also, that we might fight it. That's, that's it. I am not against the overall thing, the way this was written, it's contradictory, and y'all figured that out at 1:00 this morning or whenever. I hadn't, I don't stay up there on my email, but this right here, what y'all presented, is not what we had here.
That's not their fault, Philip.
No, and that's, I apologize, I apologize, but this right here was wrong because it was contradicting what y'all were saying.
I think we're all in agreement.
That's right. Okay, who wrote it?
I believe that one was Rockwall County.
Okay, we probably have so many different, we probably have so many different ones that there are. I am for, basically, as far as the state of Texas, basically following, but I tell you what, if it comes before this court, it ought to be right, and we shouldn't have a discussion whether it changed over the night before, whatever, because I guarantee you, there's probably four or five of these out. And the thing about it, yes, there is funding.
Philip, you're chewing me out, so quickly.
No, I'm not chewing.
Yeah, he is, he came out of my office, and we did it.
Hey, I'm just telling the truth.
We made the changes, we didn't catch it.
Okay.
He's pointing out to us, so, don't be mad at them, you act like you're mad at the representative, be mad at me.
It's just like what, no, I'm not mad at anybody, what I'm saying is.
You sound like it, calm down a little bit.
Okay, I'm subjective, I understand that. Okay, but here's also, basically, this is affecting this county, basically it is. And the gentleman right here has rode a wild horse on mental health. Am I correct?
Yep.
Surely have, but yet, Austin has taken over hundreds of millions of mental health monies from the state. That's true, and he's correct when he talks about bill. I'm asking y'all to write the thing right, unless I have it come right back up before.
Well, it is, it was, it was read correctly. You now have the correction, if you want to wait and read it after a break and come back and vote, that's fine, but the changes were minor, it was in two paragraphs.
Okay.
All it did was, it took it, it took the wording out for me to declare it, to make the court declare it. That's the, really the major change of it.
Yeah.
Which I, by law, I can declare an emergency if I so see.
Correct.
For seven days, after that, mine goes away unless the court takes action. Same thing we did with COVID. I first declared a declaration of emergency, and then we came back in, and the court approved it and extended it for, I don't remember, 30 or 60-day intervals, whatever it was.
Well, basically, taking the seven days out, in other words, this ends from seven days from today's date, if we pass it?
No.
Oh.
Representative Slaton, I appreciate your work on this. I, I have a lot of concern as well about the amount of drug and human trafficking through an inadequately secured border, so I'm all in favor of this and calling on the governor for additional aid. I'm 100% in agreement with you on that. I may have misheard, but I think the word martial law was thrown out earlier, and that is not remotely what this calls for.
I didn't use the word.
I didn't hear.
Nobody used that.
Okay, well, maybe I misheard, but I was, I was like, mm.
I didn't hear that.
I want to hop in and make sure that was, that was taken care of.
I agree.
This is simply calling upon the governor to provide additional, additional aid to the affected counties, potentially, we could ask for aid to our county.
Yes.
If our, if our law enforcement was simply so overburdened that we needed to. I think our sheriff and sheriff's department and local municipal law enforcement.
Well, our association is already sending letters out asking for immediate aid and relief from the Budget Committee out of the Senate, I think it is, and because of, you know, many counties, we're pretty fortunate here that it's, it's not, it hurts us financially, but it's not breaking us. Some of the small counties are dying because the state has shut down the prisons, and they're taking the money and going somewhere else with it instead of letting it follow the prisoners.
Yes, sir. So, how many, how many beds are there in the Hunt County jail for women?
Sheriff, buddy?
Oh, sheriff's here, he knows the answer.
It can vary, I mean, there's, there's not a designated area.
Not available right now.
Right now, I've got three, right now, I've got three hundred, three hundred inmates.
But how many just for women? How many?
We don't designate it just a women's area.
Women.
It says it comes up.
Yeah. Well, the reason I want, I wanted to point out is y'all have more than one or two beds available for women.
Oh, yeah.
And so, in these border counties, I've had some sheriffs call, and they only have one or two beds, and the cartels know this, and they have women that are transporting people, human trafficking, and then when they get caught, they know they're going to be let loose because they have no place to keep them. And so, I've been on the phone the end of last week with Texas Department of Corrections and with Tedom, trying to get an unused jail, just, I've begged them, said, if you can only open up 10 beds, 20 beds, you'll more than double the efforts in these border counties of letting them just house 10. There was one lady that got in a, in a chase, she crashed out, they took her to the hospital. They came in to interview her, you know, book her or whatever, and when they came in the room, she was gone. And of course, they're like, oh my gosh, she got away, where is she? All of a sudden, she walks back in the room, they're like, where did you go? She goes, oh, I went to the restroom. How did you know where the restroom was? She goes, oh, I've been here before. The cartels know that if they use women in these border counties to transport these people and these children, the children, we don't know where they are, they know that they have a great chance of getting away because there's not enough facility. So, that's, I mean, that speaks to the problem we have, is that if we can't even house people in the jails down there when they are caught, guess where they are coming next? And guess who they're causing problem for next? Absolutely.
The bigger problem, or an additional problem, I don't know if it's bigger or not, but I understand that there was a prison, a state prison in West Texas, I don't remember what county, but it had closed, and that county, or the county, that county and surrounding counties have gone together and are getting it recertified. And Harris County has already bought 500 beds, I think, Tarrant 200, Denton 200, and it's not because they're overrun, they don't have the staff.
Yeah.
And so, part of, part of what the governor and the state could do, if nothing else, either help us with the regulations, we got, what, 15 vacancies in jailers in our jail right now? You know, if we, if we changed it just from, instead of one to, buddy, help me, one to 40, one to 48 to one to 55 or something, and we could, you know, just do it, you know, help us a little bit with some regulation.
I agree with you. We, we have regulations, for instance, if any of our toilet breaks in our house, we may have to use the other toilet. But in a jail, if it doesn't make how many full circles when you flush, unusable, the bed can't be used. bed can't be used. We, yes, we are in a situation with labor. I couldn't agree with you more. We have.
We need some help.
That's right.
And if you're not going to send us money, help us with some regulations.
That's right. I will pass that along, and I'll work on that. Absolutely, absolutely.
Sheriff, you got any comments on any of this?
Yes.
You hold them to yourself?
I love it. Come on up here, police.
We like the story.
He's very right about this, you know, and we do need regulations. I don't, I don't want anybody coming, if you come to jail, you should be treated humanely. I have no problem with that. But what I have a problem with, we had an ice storm several years ago. I fought because I have 300 of the meanest people in Hunt County in my facility, and if the temperature drops two degrees below a certain temperature, they call their mother, and their mother calls the state, and the state calls me, and then here we go.
And you call me.
And you know what? We have elderly people out there that we are trying to get heaters to, and people is right, and that is not right. But on top of that, I have sat with Mr. Slayton and parole from not just here, I'm not talking about the workers of the parole, I'm talking about the State Parole Board and people. I sit there, I've got a guy that walked into the courthouse yesterday, that within my two years coming up of being sheriff, I have chased this guy five times with DPS. We've had helicopters and dogs. They have put three different ankle monitors on him, and this makes the fifth time he walks through my, through the door. And I go, parole? We're spending money on parole and parole officers, and they're not doing anything. Florida, I talked to a guy that had 20, I think it's Florida, that had 20 years of day. He got arrested, and I said, "Man." He goes, "I just did 20 years." And I go, "Well, you must have really messed up." And he goes, "No, they don't have parole." I said, "Well, great. Give them the two-year sentence instead of six-year sentence." They give them the six-year sentence, put them on parole for four years, and they don't enforce it every time they violate it. So, our jails are full, the same people that's coming, borders, I have no problem. If you're, America is built to where you can come over here legally, and you can make a living, and you can pay your taxes, and you can do, I welcome. But I am sick of fentanyl pills, I'm sick of the drugs, and I'm sick of the illegal stuff that's coming in and how it is illegally brought in. But, yeah, I can go on and on, but that's, that's my heart.
You can get off your soapbox now.
Sheriff, I understand this. I support that. I support that. But what I'm saying is, those funds that you're sending and everything, if all of a sudden, your house calling this year and saying, "Hey, we need some jail room," right? We need those funds with it. And that's the whole thing right there. We need the funds with it, not sent everywhere else.
We just need a little piece of it. I think with the state, I was at the legislative conference for their association, second week of September, I think it was, and Contra were stated, there's going to be, there's already 27 billion in surplus this year's budget, just this year's budget. 27 billion with a B, and the state could let loose of some of that for some of the counties that are really struggling because we all have extra expenses that we're being, we're having to pay for because state can't do their job with the jails and the prisons and the mental health hospitals, and we're having to deal with it here. And of course, then, they fussed at us about our tax rates, but we're having to pass that on to our local taxpayers, and it's not fair. State with that kind of surplus needs to give us all some, Ever County, some of that money. All right, I'll make a motion. We approve the declaration as read and as corrected.
Judge? I mean, just, I'm just wanting to clarify what is, what is said now in this declaration, but you can declare disaster, okay?
For seven days.
Right. And after that seven days, then it comes to the Commissioner's Court, and we may approve or disapprove.
Or the court, or we can bring it to the court as we are today, and the court can approve it. I don't have to do it individually.
Okay.
That's what we're doing today.
I want to clarify it because we jumped off on a rabbit trail a little bit.
Right. Yeah. No, it's, it's, instead of me doing it, the court's doing it. Instead of me doing it seven days ago and then bringing it to court, we're just doing it one time with the court. So, I make that motion to approve it.
I'll second it. And then, and for discussion on item eight, paragraph eight, this may be a Daniel question. Should, do we need to add language to the first sentence that ends, "Shall continue in effect until terminated by the county judge"? Are we covered in case he's in a bad car wreck or something, or do we need to add, or by vote of the Commissioner's Court?
The court always has the authority to do it.
We always have that authority? Perfect.
That would be continuation of that number nine.
Okay, perfect. Let me answer that question.
All right. I got a motion second, any other discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for the heated discussion. Good information. Thank you, Brian and Carmen. And go get us some money, please.
Yes.
There's a few other things when you got time. Action number seven, the sheriff and constable's fee with changes from last year effective January 1st, 2023. Commissioners, constable, y'all here? You got anything to say about it this time? Y'all good?
We just, I referenced what we discussed last time. Just to reference to what we discussed last time, we did take away the 10% buyer's fee and went strictly with just the increase in rents. That's the only change.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you.
You done good.
Anybody got any other question?
I still disagree. I still think we need to revisit that sometime.
Okay. For another day.
Another day.
I entertain a motion to approve action item seven.
Oh, move.
A motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I'm going to go ahead and make an announcement right quick, just in case somebody comes back or we're going to go off. We're going to adjourn at 11 o'clock. The court has to be at another meeting, and if we don't get finished today and we happen to go into executive session, and we may have to come out in recess and come back after lunch, just so the public, anybody watching this, if you don't see it for a while, keep checking because we'll, it will be back up. Should have announced that earlier, too. Action number eight, physical year 2022 tobacco grant from the Texas Department of State Health Services, Texas School Safety Center Tobacco Enforcement Program. Entertaining motion for approval?
So, move.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action number nine, physical year 2023 statewide automated victim notification service grant contract by and between OAG and Hunt County and the third contract renewal of the physical year 2023 participating entity services agreement from statewide automated victim services by and between Aprus Inc. and Hunt County. Aprus, I guess that's the way you say that word. Entertaining motion for approval?
Amved.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action number 10, the request to construct electrical power distribution facilities across County Road 3207 in Precinct 3.
Make a motion whether to allow the construction with normal stipulations.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 11, the request to construct electrical power distribution facilities across County Road 3246 in Precinct 3.
Make a motion whether to allow this construction with normal stipulations.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action number 12, the request to construct electrical power distribution facilities across County Road 4111 in Precinct 4.
Make a motion to approve this under normal stipulation.
Second.
And a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item 13, the widening of existing road to meet specifications approximately 636 feet of County Road 3130 in Precinct 30 monies in Escrow.
I make a motion whether to allow this construction to be done.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 14, a variance request for road upgrade precinct on County Road 2292 for plating purposes in Precinct 2. Brian?
This is a, what we've got is the owner of the property has submitted a replat, and it will be before y'all next, Commissioner's Court. But they are requesting a variance. They have some road that needs to be upgraded, and they're not wanting to upgrade the road. This is a family-to-family division. The replat is just a technicality because it is an actual platted lot, so we've got to change the existing plat. Gave you a sheet, just kind of giving the facts of the area. That's, that's what we've got. This is down on County Road 22.
92.
2292. It's down 36 south, almost to 276.
So, they're, they're just asking for a variance so they don't have to upgrade the road?
They are asking to not upgrade the road.
Well, it's actually a little bigger than that.
A cul-de-sac, the road not very long.
Well, it's supposedly a private road, but it's really not even that clear on the plat.
No, no, no.
Just not this one?
No, not that.
Oh, okay.
This is, this is a different one. This is one.
So, this one all fronts on the county road?
This all fronts on the county road.
Gotcha, okay.
You've got a one, one road-in platted subdivision back from the 80s or something.
This is being given to family member and all that? Is that the whole thing?
It is, it is being sold to a family member. You've got a...
Will this be the only portion of that road that would be upgraded?
That's correct.
And it goes a long way without any other upgrading?
490 feet is what the front of this plat is. The rest of the road is rock, rock. The road's probably 3/4 of a mile long, half a mile long. And it cul-de-sacs right after these lots, so.
And it's all rock?
It, the whole thing is rock. That's...
So, tech, the whole thing is rock, so they would be required to widen and bring it up to rock, or?
They would be required to widen and bring 490 feet at the end of the road up to oil sand.
Gotcha.
So.
And they would have to expand the cul-de-sac because the cul-de-sac's actually pretty small, you can barely turn a pickup around in it.
It's an old cul-de-sac. Doesn't look much like a circle, looks a little bit more like a...
I think that we, minimum, they'd have to do that.
Yeah, the cul-de-sac's pretty, pretty narrow. Even if I had to pull up and stop and turn around, and, you know, I couldn't just make a U-turn like you should in a cul-de-sac.
So, this was just an old plat from, when?
Oh, gosh, it's, it's old, 80s, 70s.
Does this figure proposed upgrade cost, does that include the cul-de-sac expansion?
That's the, that's the quote that Commissioner Straight gave me. That is adding four foot of width to the road. Hmm. You know, putting rock in and then doing the oil sand for the entire width of the, of the road.
So, do they front the cul-de-sac, or is it, would that remain unaffected by this?
They corner into the cul-de-sac. They don't front all of it. They, they corner into it. So, this, the road quote that was 14,550 is for a 490-foot length, and it would widen the road four feet, and it would upgrade the entire surface from rock to oil sand.
And not fix the cul-de-sac?
The, no, that's, that was the quote that Commissioner gave me, so I guess that doesn't include expanding that cul-de-sac out.
Because if they don't own the property to do that, the cul-de-sac expands.
The easement's there.
They own a quarter of the cul-de-sac.
Quarter of the cul-de-sac is in the, is affected by the plat.
Yeah.
What is the width of the road?
Right now, the road's about 16 feet.
About 16 feet wide. Uh, there's probably 10, 10 to 15 existing houses on the road as it is.
Yeah, maybe 10.
Something like that.
Not very populated.
I'm just afraid of setting a variance by granting a, or setting a precedent if we grant variances for this stuff because I mean, this is a common thing that we always deal with.
It's everywhere, yeah.
It's everywhere.
And they do not have to replat. This is...
Yes, to replat because it's a platted lot.
Is it a platted lot? So, they do have to replat?
If they just owned the property and it was a, an unplatted lot, they would not have to plat.
Okay.
Because it's a family-to-family division.
Wow, okay.
Here's the thing, about, just about the time is family lot and all that, but then they could sell it. I mean...
That's, that's always issue. They can always, you know, if it's family-to-family division, they can always sell. There again, in this instance, it's kind of null and void because it's a platted lot, and it's got to be replatted. We've got to change that existing recording document, recorded document.
You say the road is 16, or what is the right-of-way?
The right-of-way is a 60-foot-wide road right-of-way and utility easement according to the original plat.
It seems the most important aspect of this is to widen the road.
And cul-de-sac fixed is a minimum.
And the cul-de-sac.
The cul-de-sac, and of course, this is a rock road. When I say 16 feet wide, if you've been down many of the rock roads in the county that don't have deep bar ditches, 16 foot's kind of where the tracks are that are driven on. The road could be anywhere between 20 and 24 feet wide, just kind of where the, where the rock is splayed out. You're not dealing with deep, deep bar ditches on this one. So, it's, it's fairly flat across there in a flat area. Cul-de-sac is naturally my biggest concern because as it is, I mean, there again, my truck's not big. I had to pull up, stop, and back around and turn out. The widening of the road, the surface to drive on is, it's, it's...
How many?
To sustain.
How many lots are they wanting? And after they get this variance, how many lots are they wanting to break this down to?
Two. They're dividing it from one lot into two lots. You're talking about two 3.3-acre lots with 245 feet each.
Can't break it down anymore.
Can't be divided anymore. Doesn't have the furnace to be divided anymore.
How many acres is in short with now?
The, the track that they own now is seven acres.
Is that, on this aerial, is, are those barns, or is one of those a house, or what?
I think, I think one's a, one's a barn.
Is the other one a mobile home, or?
Yes. And they're going to build on the second lot for the, for the family member.
Will it be clear of any property line to get the frontage?
What do you mean?
Well, it looks like it's almost in the center of the property. What I'm looking at...
It clears. It'll, it'll clear the property line, the existing structures.
They, they will? Okay. But it looks like it's almost in the center.
It's pretty, pretty close.
Yeah.
It seems that, again, if we can... There needs to be some sort of improvement to this road. If it can be widened and the cul-de-sac expanded, it seems like that would be a significant improvement. Having a short stretch of oil sand on a long rock road. I understand the heartburn about that.
And the cul-de-sac, you're also dealing with four other properties that own... Four other tracks that own into the cul-de-sac. None of them stopped at the right-of-way line with their fences. All the fences are out pretty close. Expanding that cul-de-sac may be kind of a bear. I think there is probably something that could be done to make it a little bit better, but I don't know if you're going to get a whole lot of expansion out without getting three other property owners involved to move fences.
Daniel, I mean, we can make them get them out of our right-of-way, can't we?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
That probably would be done anyway.
If that was something that wanted to be...
It probably ought to be done anyway now it's brought to our attention. If we can't get emergency vehicles turned around in there because of it.
Yeah. I mean, what we can't do is if they're exactly the same, but we need to talk about that.
Okay.
Sounds like we need to discuss it further in executive session then.
Yeah, probably. It's a toughie.
Yeah, it is.
It's... I understand the problem, but it's... I kind of agree with Commissioner Harrison. I mean, we don't want to set a precedence either. I mean, because we've got some others coming that are asking for something very similar that little different circumstances, but... But just enough.
Wow.
You start making variances all the time, then you can't stop. All right, we'll table it for now and talk about it in executive session. Action item fifteen, final plat of Dawn Rises Estates in Precinct Two.
This one, they are requesting a conditional approval. They have not paid for the road upgrade yet. They have a road upgrade quote of about fifty thousand dollars. So they'd like a conditional approval before they cut us a check for that amount. Give them that warm fuzzy.
Any discussion? Entertaining motion for the approval of Dawn Rises Estates with the condition that they put up the money for NSGrove for the upgrade of the roads.
Is that Randy?
That's Randy.
Yeah.
That's the commissioner.
Second.
Get a motion second over there? Okay, I didn't hear you. All right.
I wasn't sure if you were through talking.
No, I was. I guess I was looking at Phillip. I was thinking it was in his precinct, not yours. All right, got a motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item sixteen, final plat of Priscilla Estates in Precinct Three.
Pretty basic. Everybody's got the furnish they need. Front's on an FM road, so there's no right-of-way to be improved or to be cleared.
Correction and reference that road, if you will.
Ah, on the vicinity map, one of the county roads it says is thirty-one seventy-seven and it's actually thirty-one seventeen, so...
You'll get them to correct that one before we sign it.
Yep, done and corrected.
All right, entertaining motion for approval.
I saw a move with that correction.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item seventeen, final plat of Decker Estates in Precinct Four.
There again, a pretty simple plat, not a whole lot to it. FM road, everybody's got the frontage. No upgrades are required.
Entertaining motion for approval?
All move.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Daniels, any comments on that?
No, there's no.
Okay. Anything else for the court at this time? Not... Entertaining motion to go into executive session under items one through five.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries for an executive session at ten thirteen.
Did you bring us back up?
We're back up.
You, uh, have you?
Yes.
Okay. Are you up, Mark?
Yes, we're live.
Okay. Yeah, well, I am now.
Okay. All right. It's, uh, ten fifty. Uh, we're back in regular session. Uh, action item number fourteen, a variance request for a road upgrade on County Road twenty-two ninety-two for plating purposes in precinct two. Uh, I'll make a motion that we deny the request for the variance.
Oh, second.
And a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries to deny the variance. Ryan, be sure and talk to them before they get away. All right. Anything else before the court? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
The motion.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Sit, uh, will be adjourned at ten fifty-one. Thank you.